We have about six things on the agenda here. The first one is to cancel December twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen council meeting. And any discussion on that?
Move to approve the cancellation of December twenty-fourth council meeting.
Second.
Now we can discuss it.
I think it's a lovely idea.
I think it's great.
Standard procedure. I remember one year Brian Rohn and I were the only people here. So from then on it got canceled.
Did you want to take a vote on this? Or you want, I mean, since it is a work session, do you want to just?
It is labeled for action, so we probably can and do so.
Yeah, we should.
Any other discussion on it? Roll call?
Cameron?
Yes.
Yemich?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Meehan?
Yes.
Weber?
No.
Yes. Since Weber did, might as well go ahead and vote yes.
Well, you're thinking.
Somebody needed to, so you got it.
Okay. Motion passes. Uh, we have a resolution three-five-three-four sale of police taco and we have that down for action also. Uh, we're getting rid of all the old police vehicles and.
Move to approve, uh, resolution thirty-five thirty-four sale of police taco. Second.
Discussion.
Is this the vehicle that sits on here, Hart County Street?
No.
No?
It's in the shop here.
Is this one gonna be pulled in yet? It's gonna have to be this one. Yeah, they're pretty cool in there, so.
I, I had a question for the chief who I do not see here. Um, I don't think that it changes the answer, but I just wanted to ask. My, my gut feeling is that there is at least the possibility that the number of vehicles we have is going to decrease in future years. And I, I just wanted to validate that if that is a possibility, that it changes this conversation. I don't think, I don't think it does, but I said, I just, I just wanted to, I said, my gut tells me that's a conversation we're going to be having. And so I, I didn't know if that influenced the decision at all, but in his absence, I don't know who to have answer that or somebody else wants to speak for that.
It's just a surplus vehicle we're getting rid of. I have a buyer for it right now.
So what are we getting for it?
Good question.
I'm not quite sure. That's final, but it is going to Bridges. And I did talk to the clerk the other day and they're super excited to get it, so.
Is there anything that says it has to go through the standard posting website that we use for all the other cities?
Doesn't have. No, because it's, we're selling it to another municipality, another entity.
So would that be true of snowplows and all the other surplus equipment we're getting rid of?
If we have other entities that wanted to purchase it, the public surplus is just handy because that then does the.
It opens to the public as opposed to just municipality to municipality. Yep. I said, I don't, I don't have any concerns with it, it was just that, I just, I just wanted to validate that that didn't impact. My gut is that it's not like you said, it's already considered a surplus at this point. And if we were to start letting them lead off the back end, it's the first one to go, so.
Right. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Cameron?
Yes.
Yemich?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Meehan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. We have a resolution three-five-three-five restricted account for victim associate services, advocate services. Discussion table.
Um, I'll go ahead and, I had, when we had the advocate report last time, I had actually reached out to our formal council um, member Anna Drew and, and just kind of refreshed my mind and, and currency on that and what we got out of that. And then when I saw this, I had reached out to her and asked her for some specific information in question. She had raised some questions. Um, I guess they had not seen a payment since January. And I thought, I said, I'm, I'm, I'm doing my best to paraphrase. Um, and we, I know we had it in the previous budget. And then we also had it in this budget and looking at it. So I had asked her to kind of summarize her thoughts and questions and she sent a letter out which I see is, is also been included with the group. It is also my understanding that she reached out and talked to, to Lonnie a little bit. So their position was more one of wanting to understand. Um, clearly they saw some benefit and, and, and do benefit um, from the monies that we send them and just wanted to understand if we will be continuing to do that or if we're looking at changing that. My thoughts were looking at the current budget, it looked like we had already set that up as pass through, through June of next year.
For DSBS.
For DSBS.
This is for the.
I, I, yeah, I'm sorry. And, and there, and there are two things that are money but related, sort of a thing. So that was, that was, I'm just, that was the reason I had reached out to her and got her input. They were in full support of Tessa's work and, and wanted to make sure that their questions were in no way misconstrued to say that they were not fully supported by that.
Right. Uh, and we have not signed a contract with DSBS. And this is totally up to Judge Edebit, which is his area. Uh, we did talk, or Lonnie did talk to him. He said he would be in here tomorrow if he wants to apply and talk with him on this and move forward there.
What is the role of the, the, the council in this? And I said, I guess to, to, to Councilman, um, Cameron's point that I, I wanted to provide that as an introduction to why we had gotten a lot of last minute information, um, from DSBS reaching out is because I specifically asked for some clarification to help me understand that. But, but my understanding, and, and I'm open to input from anybody who can answer, is that this is, it's pass through money, it's actually money that comes in and is belongs to the court in essence. And that's, and that's the reason we're setting up a separate account is because that comes in from the court and then the court dispenses it. We've just been playing the middle man.
Okay, so what happens is every month I get a city court on dispersment. So he gives me one check, gives me a breakdown of what is the city's, what is the county's, and then what is the victim witness administration fee is what it's called.
Okay.
So in the past it's gone, that, the victim wit- witness administration fee and surcharge went to DSBS. So, um, the judge had asked to, um, for me to hold those funds to, um, look through MCA code as far as using those funds to pay for the victim advocates position. So, um, that's what this resolution is doing. That money is still sitting there. It's the, the court, it's a passer, but that money since February is still sitting there. So until it was decided on who it was going to go to.
Since February of two thousand and nineteen, the money's been sitting there?
Yes.
And that would align with the information that I gathered, I guess, as well. Is the, is the thinking and maybe, and if you don't know, you can't, is the thinking that the first four thousand dollars of that will go to fulfill our contract that we have with the county? And then the leftovers would perhaps go to DSBS or?
No, so what, um, it, it's not a lot of money that comes that the court gets. So, um, since February, um, there has been three thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So that's what's currently sitting there. So like I said, it's not, they don't receive a whole lot of money, um, every month. But the judge's thoughts were to put that into a restrictive fund to help pay for that victim advocates um, portion that we paid to the county. And in MCA code, it, it gives them, from my understanding, I didn't read it, but from what the judge was telling me, was, um, the court sets it up as far as who gets, if they are, if we have, because before we never had Tessa. So now we do and so that's why he was trying to figure out how to do that with the resolution.
And, and I think it makes sense to have that in, in its own fund. I, the only other thing I had was an edit on the title. It says a resolution to provide established and it seems like it ought to be in either or, or there's a missing word. Just, just.
Lonnie, does this work for your system?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Diane?
In the expenditures for two thousand and eighteen nineteen, under the CC DSBS pass through payments, we made payments.
Yes.
February.
But that goes to the county. See, there's, there's two separate payments that come out of that line item. There is the payments that go to the, to Carbon County that is put into this dispersment that I have to separate. So those are, those payments from February through are to the county, to Carbon County.
And that's, is that for Tessa or is that for something else?
No, that's, it is law, well, law enforcement academy, technology surcharge. And I think, I believe they renamed it here recently. Here it goes. Yeah, they changed the law enforcement academy to a criminal conviction surcharge. But those, those amounts is what goes to the county and the county then sends that payment wherever.
One of, one of the interesting pieces of feedback that I will share, because I think it fits into the discussion. When I reached out on the, um, advocacy report that you got last time, just to, to increase my understanding of it, it seemed like, if I understood correctly, so don't, don't hold this as fact, but it seems like one of the pieces of feedback I got that is of all the entities that, that, that Tessa's working with in the county, that we probably topped the list of people who weren't taking advantage of the help that's available there. So there may just be some additional, we weren't reaching out, because there's things that we may be having the city attorney do, there may be things that we have Chief Wells doing or his staff that, that she could be doing from that. So maybe just something to look into, because that was, when I reached in, that was one of the feedback is that we actually utilize them less than the other entities that are part of that system.
Then I think that'd be a great question for Judge.
I've got a question. When did our contract with DSBS end? We don't have a contract with DSBS. Okay, so, so we budgeted for DSBS, it's a line item, a pass through. And we paid through January and then we stopped paying even though we didn't have a contract. Um, that was the last fiscal year, correct? Because that ended, so we haven't made a payment since January, the fiscal year ended June thirtieth. Uh, do we have, have we approached them about a contract?
The chief has decided not to sign that contract.
Do, do you think that that's something that probably should have been discussed here at the council? Seeing as we have budgeted for that and we have budgeted for, for the twenty-twenty year?
So the budget is just, because it's not city money, it's the court's money.
It's the public's money.
It's the court's money, so when we budgeted that pass through, we had to do it like that because in previous budgets, we were paying those, but we had had a budget for it. So the court was showing that it was like overspent, even though it wasn't, because it was money coming in and we didn't budget it to go out. So it's just a pass through, there is no city money or general fund money that is in that, that budget.
And, and, and that goes back to my original question of our role in this case is then merely to facilitate setting up a separate account. And I think what I'm hearing from the other conversations is we probably won't be expecting to see that as a line item at all in future budget here.
It will, because we will still continue to have to pay Carbon County through that pass through also.
I guess my concern is, is that for twenty years, the city and DSBS had a relationship. Supported that.
We didn't have.
All of a sudden we're not.
And then, and the city will still use DSBS.
Well, I'd like to hear, I guess I'd like to hear from the chief and the judge what the issue is.
Yeah, I've always been under the understanding that money that comes into the city, regardless of any taxes, fees and fines, which this would be considered a fee, is, goes into the general fund and we have to account for it. And we have to decide, make sure that it's put where it's supposed to be put. If it's, if it's something that's supposed to be used for advocacy for victims, then we need to definitely do a budget amendment and have that line item to split advocacy for victims. If we've always just given it off to DSBS, then, then maybe that is something that needs to be discussed, or at least we need to be informed at some level that, you know, the chief has the authority to make the discuss, to make the decisions about how the money coming into the city is spent. I, that's my opinion.
So, so fines and forfeitures go into the general fund. That's not what we're talking about. These are separate fees that are paid to the court for specific things, not for the general fund, not fines and forfeitures. Those are separate within that dispersment also. They get put into the general fund. These are pass through payments.
And they're reflected in the general fund?
As a pass through payment.
But they're reflected in the current budget as payments to DSBS.
Yes.
And we haven't paid since January.
Well, it was just good line item, because we were, and then that is when the judge brought it up to put these on hold. And then that could have been, because it's through the court. Like I said, he said he's available tomorrow if anybody would like to go see.
Do we know what time?
Because this is just up for discussion.
I'll be able to make it work, work.
He gets in at eight.
Um, and, and Mayor, I, I said, I, what's, what's a little tricky for me, and I, I, I don't wish, and I think I speak probably universally for the council, I don't wish to do anything that resembles micromanagement or even management, management of any way, shape or form, but it is, it's interesting to me to, to look at the amount of dollars that we are directing toward law enforcement and spending and say we're spending money here, but to me, this is very much a related expense. And so it doesn't make sense to say we're gonna spend more here, but we won't spend money on victims. We're gonna have twenty-four seven police coverage, we're gonna have everybody with their own car, we're gonna have all of these things. It's a different thing, but that's that law enforcement umbrella. To me, the advocacy program is very much in line with that. So it doesn't make sense to me to be pushing one up and cutting the other one down. If it's important, it should be raising all ships or related items. That's just, that's a kind of an issue.
You're, you're mixing the judicial with the law enforcement department and those are two different.
Samples in order.
Yeah, but if the chief has the decision on whether DSBS gets, gets, gets payment. That's mixing the judicial.
It's law enforcement.
Yeah, with law enforcement.
Because it's, the pass-throughs are in the court's budget in the general fund. They're listed in the court's budget, so I don't, I guess I too would like to have that explained at least. Why is it the chief that has the authority to decide whether or not we're gonna enter into a contract with DSBS? And what services, you know, or whatever that pass through was? How much authority, much leeway did, do, does the city have to decide how those advocacy funds are going to be paid? I mean, is that, I don't know. Is that three thousand dollar figure that you, that you talked about? That was the city's portion of those? Or that was the ones that were dispersed among counties?
These are the forms I get from the court. This is how they're dispersed. And so I'm assuming, because it's state statute as far as how he allocates those fines and those funds.
So the, who, who, who's he?
The judge.
The judge allocates how those funds are, are spent, how those, how to send that. So is he choosing? What?
By state code.
Okay, so, so the judge is choosing uh, the victim advocate that works over at the county courthouse over DSBS? And is that, is that what we're doing, is saying we're gonna eliminate any payment to DSBS and we're going to go with this, this other advocate and limit those funds to to whatever the pass through is? I don't know. I, that's what I'm asking.
So it means that's why the judge said we have questions to ask him. And he could have been here to answer questions.
I, I think for the, I think for the, I think for the, the matter at hand, what I'm hearing and, and I'm hearing Lonnie in strong support of is this is a better administrative way to basically keep from commingling those funds for anything else, what makes the book keeping straighter and simpler.
Correct, I believe from what I understand is what his plan was, was to help offset that payment to the, for the victim advocates that comes out of the general fund.
And.
When it can, these funds can be used for.
And so my two cents, I think from what I'm hearing is, I think I'm comfortable with moving forward on this. However, I think it is fair to say that it spawned some other questions that are going to come up in the future and, there's probably some questions and concerns and we just, when it comes to budgeting and contracts and related, we've, we've, we've got fair notice of that. Is that, is that a fair way to summarize that?
I would, I would say that's a good way. Uh, I can request that he'll be here, um, at the work session before the council meeting. If you guys can't, uh, meet with him tomorrow. I'll make sure that the chief and the judge is here on that second Tuesday, December.
I appreciate.
Because one of the whereas it says, the city of Red Lodge has funds that are paid from fines that are allocated to DSBS. So that whereage shouldn't even be in there if we're not gonna allocate those funds to DSBS.
And well, I, and I said, we've, in my mind, we've already got a budget, not only through last year through June, but we've got it through next June that we've already set up and like that. So part of what I'm hearing is maybe that's not how we're choosing to spend it, in which case it feels like there are, since we passed that budget, it feels like there needs to be some adjustment made if we're gonna do differently than what we had a public hearing on and what the mayor prepared and what the council signed off on.
Yeah, sounds like a budget amendment.
Uh, petition to vacate city right of way, twelfth street, discussion. Yes, Diane?
I gave everybody a packet of information that I had received this afternoon. Um, with, uh, some correspondence with Mr. Halleck and the utility clerk in the city where somebody called me and asked me about it and I had no idea, so they brought it over and wanted the council to download drop these of, some of the reasoning behind the, um, the vacation of the city right away, so. It was sitting by your chairs. Just so you know where that came from.
Is this the one that starts memorandum where he eased costs?
Yes. Yes. Just kind of gives a history of how we got to this point.
James, you wanna bring us up today on it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this was a request that was born out of the water line, like with a, a service line at the end of the alley down twelfth street, um, just discovered that the, um, that part of the alley was not owned up by that property that it was in the right of way. There really hasn't been any evidence discovered that, um, shows that there was an effort ever made by the city to come to any sort of resolution on that property where the garage is sitting on the right of way. The, um, the home, or the garage has been there for about seventy years. Um, and the, um, after that water line issue, the property owner decided to move ahead with the petition to vacate. Um, it was something I was very lukewarm on due to the fact of the proximity to Rock Creek and our desire to increase access to Rock Creek. There are a few issues with the, that are somewhat unique to the property. The, um, there is a slice of Daley Avenue between the garage and the creek that that property owner does own. So there was a portion of Daley Avenue vacated. So technically the, what we are potentially abandoning does not affect Rock Creek. So that's one issue. The, the property owner has been paying taxes on the building, but they have not been paying taxes on the line. There is, um, in my opinion, this is something that we should be taking care of. We shouldn't just have buildings, um, on our public lands and knock them to some sort of resolution on how it's handled. Um, there, there's basically one other alternative, um, which would be to provide an easement for the garage. Uh, that also has quite a few drawbacks, um, as opposed to abandoning. Um, if we abandon it, we obviously lost control of it, um, permanently. Uh, with an easement, we are, would be basically saying that if it's more than fifty percent destroyed, that it can't be rebuilt. Um, the odds of that happening in the next hundred years are pretty small. Um, and so what I think would happen would be just routine constant maintenance on the garage. If there was an easement, it'd probably be there pretty much, you know, for, for a very long time. Um, and there's actually one benefit to potentially abandoning it um, as opposed to an easement in terms of long-term access. Um, because it, the building will be grandfathered in for either way, whether it's, uh, abandoned or an easement. But if, uh, if it were abandoned and at some point they tore down that garage and eventually I would hope that we will have some sort of riparian corridor setbacks, um, that won't allow new buildings, um, really close to the creek, which is something some cities in Montana are starting to view, most ones done it, I know a few others have done it. Um, maybe at some point we'll get there as well. But if, um, if there's ever a rebuild, we get that riparian corridor setbacks and we would be able to make sure that that building, when rebuilt, is further from the creek. If we have an easement and they can do perpetual maintenance, um, the odds of that ever moving, I think, probably shrink. That was part of my reason for, um, recommending approval for it, I'm not comfortable with it. Um, another thought was I was trying to find the other certain, other circumstances where we know of properties, permanent structures on city-owned land. And the only other ones I can think of are, are quite a bit different and those are down by Finn Park, where there's some very old rickety garages on the strip of land between Hagan and Rock Creek. Uh, so those are not contiguous to the properties. And they're, they're all about a hundred years old. And my expectation has been that eventually those will go away and we will have that land. Let's, um, report I've got the, um, the process for this is that, is laid out by Montana statute that it goes to city council once. Um, they decide if they want to move forward with it or not. So that is what we're here for tonight, is to decide if you want to move forward or explore different options.
James, um, I'm remembering, and maybe you can help. It seems to me like we recently discussed a different, and, and, and at first I was thinking it was the same, but as the more I'm listening to it, I think it was different. We recently discussed another abandonment.
Um, fifth and left.
That's the council. Yes. Yeah. On the, how would you compare this to or differentiate it from that action? Just thinking of and looking at consistency.
Uh, the main difference would be the proximity to Rock Creek. Um, they're very similar in that they're both, they both have permanent structures on city rights away. And, um, and in that case, the, uh, the shape of that lot was very unique because there was abandoned railroad right of way that was given to the city. And so that lot, in that case, appeared to be a normal sixty-two hundred and fifty square foot lot, but it was not because of the abandoned right of way.
And I apologize, I was, I was kind of on work at our last planning board meeting. Did this come before the planning board? Has this, has this come before the planning board?
No, that is not part of a petition to right of way, of, of right of way, uh, process, it's part of Montana statute. Um, and that's, you know, so we, that's something we. Um, and that's, you know, so we, that's something we have to be careful of, but we ask people to do extra processes. Um, but it's something we can get challenged on.
Yeah, I didn't recall if the last one had gone through that process. I remember we talked about it and somebody had asked me and my recollection is, I, I, and I, again, I was thinking of the older one and I knew we had discussed it, but in my mind I wasn't clear on the distinction in which meetings we had or had not discussed it, so.
Discussion at the table. Mary.
So can the, is the, the building that you talked about, that James talked about, um, is that the garage?
Yes.
That was built in nineteen fifty? So only if it, um, were destroyed in the event of a natural disaster, not if they tore it down? If they tore it down, but they rebuild on the same plot?
Currently, we could definitely prevent that.
Wouldn't we want to?
That would be, um,
I understand that the floor is rotted out from the leaking water underneath it.
I, I would say that we should not allow to be rebuilt under certain circumstances.
Is that a separate issue or does that go along with this? If we, if we do this, then would, would that come before the council?
If, uh, no, it would not. If, uh, if a petition was approved, then they would be able to rebuild.
So if this is approved, then they would be able to rebuild?
Correct. Otherwise, it would just be routine maintenance.
James.
So you are advising that we approve this?
Uh, I'll just call it a weak advisal, but, um, I do think, um, I don't, I don't really like it. Uh, I spoke to the mayor about it quite a bit, kind of trying to decide what to do on it, um, and considering the circumstances that they could do routine maintenance on it in perpetuity. Um, that was kind of what swayed me to, to explain that we should probably do it because otherwise, um, if we don't, it'll be the same garage, they can just keep doing maintenance and unless there's, you know, unless the small chance that it is destroyed by fire in the next hundred years, um, it'll, it'll always be there. Um, and we can potentially get something in our zoning to create more of a setback from Rock Creek if it were abandoned and rebuilt. Otherwise, um, they would just continue to do maintenance even if we did have some sort of increased setbacks off of Rock Creek that would be grandfathered in.
What is the garage owner requesting? I haven't had time to look through all this, so.
The abandonment of the north half of 12th Street from the alley to Daley Avenue.
Okay. And what are you advising the council to give them? That abandonment?
Correct.
Good. What is, you, you said in your comment, and I had made the notes, and I said, and, and for those in the audience, just by awareness, um, the amount of documentation we have on this has doubled in the last two hours. Um, so there's, there's some information that I have not had a chance to, to, to read through. Um, the one thing I did have on my notes is you had said you'd publish a notice and I, I had in my notes to ask if there was any feedback against. Um, we have since received feedback against, while I haven't had a chance to read the whole document, one of the things that jumps out at me is, is the sentence that said, "Action on this item is premature." So I guess my next question is, what is the urgency for us to move immediately on this? Or is this an artificial deadline? Do we have the luxury of being able to step back and look at this and come up with a solution that doesn't make the hair on your neck stand out?
Yeah, we absolutely do.
Diane.
Um, the packet that I gave you tonight that I, I received this afternoon is actually dated November fifteenth and it was addressed to Mr. Glynn and the city council members. And it really explains the whole situation and how we got to this point. And I think that this packet should have been in with our packets. The council should have had this information on before six o'clock tonight. Um, there's a lot more to this than just the garage and the abandonment of the property. It's a water line that was busted. You have, you have to read it. I mean, this is ridiculous. The garage has been there for seventy years and I will tell you one thing, if that water line hadn't broken, we would not be discussing this tonight. So.
Hey, I think what I'm hearing James say is we have the luxury of stepping back and looking at this now that we have the information available.
And I will say that this public hearing has been publicized and this gentleman that's asking for this has made arrangements to be here on December tenth. He doesn't live in the city. But.
That's, that's next week? Or is that two weeks?
Next week.
Next week, okay.
And we can certainly have a discussion at the discussion point of it. And I understand that there, we had got two emails today from people, but I also believe that if everybody had been aware of this packet of information, it would have given a bigger picture for everybody to actually know how we got here.
Yeah, just so you know, Diane, Jim and I reviewed those documents due that were sent to me from Mr. Halleck. Um, it was pretty much all entirely about the water line issue, which, you know, in our view was not really relevant to the right of way.
Well, I think if you're saying, dear Mr. Glynn and the Red Lodge council members, I'm sure that Mr. Halleck believes that we had all this information before tonight.
And he's, he's, he knows that we don't. I, I emailed him and said that I thought it was, the water line issue was, was irrelevant to the issue. Uh, in part, Mr. Halleck, um, was of the belief that because this, the service line had broken, that he thought, and it was within the city right of way, he felt the city should pay for that service line replacement. Our ordinance is very clear that we will pay for and fix anything that goes to the curb stop. And regardless of where it is, it could be on private property, it could be on public property, we fix up to the curb stop. Um, Mr. Halleck felt that we should pay for it because it's in the right of way, but our ordinance is very clear that we only pay up to the curb stop.
And in fairness, we have tested that a couple of times and then over the last couple of years where it's come up and we've, we've been consistent in that.
So it, I guess I'd have to look and see where the abandoned, I mean, there was a, there was a current curb, curb stop and a old curb stop. And then leak happened in between those two, is that correct, Jim?
Just like we do, what, on the Hagan water line, we put the new line and we put the curb stops up to the property line where we could or the, or the, wherever we could to the property line or to the sidewalk, whichever worked, and we connect to the old service. There were many of them, that there was a curb stop beyond there, the, up on the property, where we, we found, I mean, back when they put these in a hundred years ago, they get stuck in nilly-willy and we have since then, with all the water lines done over the past twenty years, the curb stops go as close to the property line as possible. And we are required from the curb stop to the main, where there was a new main put in this alley in, I want to say ninety, eighty-nine, ninety, when they put the new, they put the new curb stop right at the property line of the alley. And it connected to his old service, which from that part went down 12th Street in ways and then into the property, but uh, it's still in the easement of this, the city in, in 12th Street. But when they put the new line, that's where the curb stop was, was put. And so when, when he, he did this line, they handed out, they found an old abandoned, uh, there wasn't even a riser on it, it wasn't even a active curb stop with a bough down in the ground where it was leaking. And we helped supply it in the connections to put the new line and connect to what he had, to his property.
I'm comfortable with the discussion slash conclusion that, that the leaking pipe and, and the abandonment are two unrelated issues. I don't, I don't think that.
I think you should read the documents.
Yeah, and, and, and I can, I will, and, and I guess that's the big thing is we've, we've got new information. I'd love time to read it and then rather than feeling like we have to make a decision about yes or no, I don't think we're there just yet.
Is everybody in agreement that we put this off and
I've got a question.
Take it up again. Yes, Mary.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, are, when the staff received, um, correspondence from anybody and it's addressed to the city planner, James Kneglia, and the city council, and then, dear Mr. Glynn and Red Lodge city council members, is it the staff's decision whether or not they're going to share that information with the council? Or should that information have come to the council?
I think that's a great question. Uh, you know, most of the stuff goes to the city clerk and there, from there it goes on to the, to council and everybody. Yeah, I don't know. What did we do with that? Did that just stop there or?
You know, and, and I apologize when, you know, I think I overlooked the part where it was addressed to city council too, but you know, as, as staff, if an applicant is submitting documents that are not what we feel is relevant to the, um, the ask of what they are seeking, then we would not include that information. Um, I, I realize it does say that it, um, addresses city council and I overlook that, but yeah, so they, we may get at times people who want to, um, submit much more than what is relevant for the case. Um, and, and I did, I did want Mr. Halleck to know.
James, when I would discuss it, you better remember there's, there's a small portion of Daley Avenue that was abandoned that he owns and part of the garage sits on that portion of property. So it comes down to it in a deal, I mean, we, our portion of property ends before the creek and he owns from that portion of the garage sits on his property closer to the creek. So I mean, I, it's, it's a catch twenty-two to me, it doesn't really, uh, bother me either way of the fact that even if we, if we don't abandon it, we still have no access to the creek. If the garage falls down, he still owns the property close to the creek, but we don't, we have, uh, I've been here for twenty-seven years, we've never done any maintenance or anything on that part of the street or any, uh, we don't plow that, we don't do any, um, but that, that's a part of what you, we have to look at too, is you have to, part of that garage sits on his own property, which is needed, and then there's parts that sits on this city, I don't know. It's been there seventy years, I don't know where, what was done back then that were missed or that they didn't do something right, I don't know, we can't redo history, but it's kind of a mute point as far as us getting access to the creek when he owns the property next to the creek.
My question was more about the process of correspondence that comes in, information that comes in, and I would really think that it would be important that if it comes in addressed to the council, that the council members all receive that.
And I just joined it down, I'll take that up at the next, next apartment heading you need, but if somebody does.
And I, I think it's fair to add a footnote or comment, this is addressed to you, I don't think it's relevant, but I think I would agree if it comes in addressed to us that citizens are expecting, we are seeing it.
And it is addressed to us, yeah.
And, but just to be clear, I did let Mr. Halleck know after we had reviewed it that that wasn't going to be included in the package, so he was aware of that.
So, so we have a hearing that has been already noticed and published for the tenth on this, is that correct?
We can, yeah.
So is, is it appropriate for us and can we still have that hearing that's been published? It sounds like people are making efforts to come here without taking further action at that point and just have that public hearing separately, or do we have to bifurcate those two somehow?
Sure.
Double check that, but I think we, we can hold a public hearing, but we don't have to take action, so I think that's probably the most logical option.
So continue with public hearing and in the meantime, we'll go over what we've received after.
Can, and I did notice, out of the corner of my eye, a couple of hands, I don't know if you want to have a public conversation when these items are on, I believe that.
I think so, yeah. Public comment, is everybody at the table though? Good. Public comment.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Bandetto through seventeen, eight and south. And I submitted a letter earlier today about the, about the abandonment of the right of way and and my, my overriding issue is that, that we, through the city growth policy, parks plan and, uh, and other, other city documents have, have long established the desire to to maintain and create access to, to, uh, Rock Creek and along Rock Creek corridor and the city through past actions going back a long, long number of years is, has slowly, um, abandoned or, or, uh, or taken out of public ownership, a number of parcels along the creek, and there's only a few that remain. And if we are, if we are to establish or achieve the goals as, as outlined in, in, in a number of those city plans and documents for creating, maintaining access, um, to Rock Creek, um, one of the first, first things that needs to happen is, is to have a, an evaluation, an inventory of which parcels remain along with, along Rock Creek and the Rock Creek corridor, as well as, as a determination on which of those parcels are suitable for retaining in, in public ownership to provide access. And one of the proposals in, uh, in, um, the parks plan talks about, um, pocket parks and linear parks and, and there's a number of existing right of ways that sort of meet that criteria that would, would serve well as, as, uh, small park, 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 parks. Um, also in, uh, I think it's the ATP plan talks about establishing Hagan Avenue as a bicycle and walking route. And again, these small pocket parks kind of would, would let them, these small parcels or rights, pieces of right of way would lend themselves to sort of offshoots of, of that in providing access to Rock Creek or along the right, Rock Creek riparian corridor. So I, I guess what, what I'd like to see is, um, more involvement in the Parks Board in terms of when it proposes come before the, the city for abandonment of rights away and/or or transfer of, of city property to public ownership. And as well as I think it's pretty important that the city move forward with an, with that inventory and evaluation, uh, before any, any further decisions are made relative to abandoning rights, rights away. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yeah?
I'm Goldie, one oh six Adams Avenue, South. Um, I've been a resident now for twenty years plus years here on Red Lodge and I've been involved in multiple plans, several of the growth policy with original and some of the revisions, parks plan, A and D plan. And I guess, time and time again, I've heard this public desire to protect these, these right of ways, these access to trail, potential trail, future trails, public, uh, Rock Creek corridor. Um, so I guess when I heard this on the council agenda tonight, anytime I hear abandonment of a right of way, it kind of gets the hairs up on the back of my neck. Um, I just think that, you know, we need to really look at our guiding documents for the city and I ask that you do that as well. I think big picture, what I'm seeing over the, over the twenty years I've been here is this, this constant shifting away. I can't, I can't disagree with Jim's argument that even if we give this a, or even if we retain this as public right of way, then we still might not have uh, access to Rock Creek. Do you see what happens, is happening? We're giving away this piece and this piece and that piece and and ultimately it's creating this, this blockage to the things that we hold here in this community. So I really would ask that you, you know, look at this proposal very carefully. Look at the, the guiding documents, what we've set forth, we put a lot of effort, a lot of public opinion has gone into this, a lot of public desires, I think are really eloquently captured in those documents is what they want to see this future become. And, uh, you know, just make, make some sound decisions, but take, take a, take a look at what's happening around this, with this slowly abandonment process that we're, we're, we're leading ourselves into. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other public comment on this? Anything else at the table?
I would love to hear, and, and again, I think this speaks to the, let's, let's slow down and, and do the aim part before the fire part. Um, I would love to hear some of these conversations and input. I don't know what other ideas have been pursued, but I, I heard you say that, that this one doesn't sit quite right with you either. I don't know if there's, is he married to this garage? Is there land swap possibilities? Is there trades or there, you know?
No garage.
I just, I, I guess, I guess that there's, I, I acknowledge that there's a lot of new information that, that has come out in the last hour or two that I've not had a chance to review, but it sounds to me like, as I'm listening to this, it sounds to me like one of those things where I want to, where there's, there's somebody who can facilitate a good conversation, my, my gut tells me there's a, there's a decision out there that's, that's reachable that ends up making everybody happier than anybody thought they were going to be, but I'm an optimist, so.
I'm Mike Booth, I live at, uh, four oh two North Platte, I'm representing Kurt, who made a halic in this. Take a look at the property, it's been this way for seventy years. This garage was built in nineteen forty-nine. Plus, as Jim said, he owns the property on Daly Avenue, so even if you had right-of-way, you couldn't access the creek anyway, plus there's a fifty-foot embankment underneath from the bank to the creek. So you're not going to access it there anyway. So common sense would tell you to give the man the street, that he's, you're going to get paid taxes on it, property taxes on the land, that you're not getting now, and he, he's happy. He's also a businessman in this town that hires seasonal staff, brings in tourism, generates resort taxes, and he needs to be treated as such. And the other thing, James, with all due respect, the water is not irrelevant. The water is what caused this discussion to begin with.
Which I cited.
And I would just tell you, and you can see from my notes there, if the abandonment is not fulfilled by the city, he will initiate a suit against the city for damages for the water line in his time, as well as the abandonment. He is a lawyer, he will represent himself. So do you want to go that route, or you want to do what's been, is there for seventy years, and give the man what's right in the abandoned property? You have another, on the other side, you have another, uh, vacant lot that's about to be sold. So chances are they're going to petition for the other half of the tolls. Common sense, guys, common sense.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Sorry, um, I was just wondering if anybody actually had a thought, that we could do that.
It's in the council packets. A map, I've got a fucking map, so I could.
Yeah, here's one right here.
Any other public comment? Comment at the table? So it sounds like we're having the public hearing, um, so we're holding off doing any more on this until we have that public hearing.
I would.
Okay. Thank you.
Lot of work to do on this.
I think so. Okay, very good. Uh, we have an update on the new LED streetlights, Robin.
All right, so I've been here about two months now, but for those of you who don't know, um, I'm the Energy Corps member, her name's Robin, um, and I get to come with some good news. Uh, so as many of you know, Northwestern Energy has decided to start a four-year project to replace forty-three thousand streetlights in Montana, and the city of Red Lodge is one of the first towns to benefit from that program. Um, and we put out a couple of proposals, but Northwestern Energy gave me some more updated information, specifically with cost savings and energy savings. So, um, we are looking at about ninety thousand dollars in savings per year. Um, and that's an estimate, and it's contingent on a couple of different things. One of them being Northwestern Energy is planning on going for rate hikes in about four years, and so the cost would probably go up, so our savings might go down, um, but there aren't specifics on that yet. So take this one with a grain of salt. Uh, the other reason why it might not be completely accurate is because the twenty-four, uh, decorative streetlights on Broadway, they completely gutted them and are cut, they custom ordered LEDs to go in there that are already connected to the fixture, so they don't have any formulas that they would be able to figure out exact price differences that we're going to see. Um, the energy and emissions reductions are a little bit more sure, so I'm throwing a lot of numbers at you, so feel free to look at the paper for reference. Um, it's going to be about eighty-six thousand kilowatt hours a year, which is this very abstract number, but it is the equivalent of a hundred and fifty thousand miles driven, or if you diverted twenty-one tons of waste from the landfill, so it's pretty significant. Um, and the total city's emissions in twenty sixteen was one thousand nine hundred and ten metric tons of CO2 equivalents, um, and the emissions reduction that we're, that we will see with all the LED lights going in will be sixty-one tons. So that's three percent of our entire emissions as a city, so it's pretty huge. Um, this is something that the previous Energy Corps members worked on a lot with Lisa Perry, who we'll meet right after I speak, um, but she's been a Northwestern Energy representative, but the mayor and I and Jim and Mike Ferguson that we all work with. Um, any questions on cost, energy emission reduction savings? Okay, um, so city-owned streetlights, I want to be super clear, Northwestern Energy is replacing the lights on Broadway from eighth to fourteenth Street, and the city owns the ones from third to eighth. Um, and so Jim and I have been talking a lot about this, and Lisa and I have been talking a lot about this, um, because we would like to plan to retrofit the ones on third to eighth with lights that match the ones that are going in, eighth to fourteenth. So the long-term plan would be that they all match third all the way down to fourteenth. Um, and so we're waiting on identifying what those lights will be, ordering them, but the retrofit for those will take place as soon as possible. Um, and then other city-owned lights, so we know that we at least own those fourteen on third to eighth, and we own Lions Park lights, and we own Pride Park lights, for a couple of different reasons. I think there's other lights the city owns that aren't included with the Northwestern retrofit, so once the more shipments come in, um, and they complete all two hundred and thirty-four streetlights, Northwestern Energy will give us data on exactly which ones they retrofitted, and so we'll be able to compare that with data that we have, and it'll make it easier to figure out which lights or which, who owns what, and then we can see which ones still need LED, and that will lead to more cost savings for the city. Any questions on any of that, I want to bring it back, yeah?
On the third to eighth, ones that we would be responsible for retrofitting, are you thinking that's going to work into this year's budget somehow, or is that something that's going to happen?
We've, we've got nineteen bulbs out right now, which we're, we need to replace anyway, and we're working, uh, to get what we're, we, we replaced, uh, fourteen of them last year with some new LEDs, but they're a different, uh.
Color.
Color. Grade deal, whatever, they're silver, they're much brighter, much wider, and so.
Higher Kelvin temperature.
Yes, yes, we're going to try and match the downtown ones, that's where we replace them as they burn out, and then we're replacing with the same type of light. Uh, we retrofitted those to LEDs, if you remember here, a couple of years ago. Everything from third to eighth was changed to LED, but they were, they've been burning out faster than, you know, they're twenty li- twenty-year light bulb with a three-year warranty, and they didn't make the three years hardly. But, so we replaced about fourteen of them last year, and we've got the lights we got then, where you're just a brighter, wider, but when, when they're replacing these ones to make them match, we want to kind of get something that will match as close as possible, so we're working at getting those bulbs now. Uh, Mike.
Harvey Surgeson.
Yeah, offered to change the lights.
Yeah.
Actually, what we have to do is, we, we don't own a bucket trucks, we had to rent a lift at twelve hundred dollars to replace those fourteen, and he offered to, to, with already eight, to already replace the bulbs for us, so we're working to try and get bulbs as soon as possible, and get them replaced, and, and it's our responsibility, and like I said, we have nineteen of them out right now, we've, a couple of weeks ago started working on this, but then when we, their lights not matching ours has become a different, so what we're in the process of doing now is finding the bulbs, the light bulbs, and replacing them, and as they burn out the rest of it, we're replacing with matching, because they're expensive.
So, but what we're going to have matching lumens and kelvin all the way up and down the street?
That's, that's the plan, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're working with, trying to find out which lights, because we do have different, I guess the socket deals are different in the two different types of lights, and then getting the right light with the right lumens, it's beyond my, uh, real mobile light bulb, sort of, back on the screw man.
Jim, and next time you want to change a light bulb in your house, I have three very large bags of different temperatures and wattages and lumens, every.
And that's our process.
It's changed in the world.
And get them done as soon as possible, because like I said, in that two-block area, we've got nineteen bulbs out right now.
Yeah, so it's not as simple as just copying and pasting what they put in eighth to fourteenth, because, yeah, the sockets.
Yeah, it's only like we take the bulbs they're getting and put it in those lights with their different.
That's true. Okay, um, so Lisa's now going to talk about, um, more specifics about exactly which lights they're retrofitting, and we'll talk about some dark skies, so, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. So I've learned by example, I'm Lisa Perry, Community Relations Manager at Northwestern Energy, and I live in Hotley, Montana. So thank you, Robin, um, yes, a couple of things about, that all we're replacing is the inside, the globes are staying the same, so to the avid person driving down the street, they may notice a difference in the brightness, or the, the color, more white to blue, but to a lot of people, they're not going to be able to notice a difference, so. So first off, I'd like to introduce Mike Ferguson, Mike is our new town manager here in Red Lodge, and we are so happy to have him, and, um, not arguing.
We're happy to have you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I changed jobs. We got the eyeball on that one.
And I would like to clarify also, um, to Mike's offer, that when he is using the Northwestern Energy bucket truck and relamping those lights for you, he is doing that unpaid on his own time. And it's a volunteer thing that he's offered to do for the city.
Thanks, Mike.
So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So, so far, we have, we have two hundred and thirty-four lights in the city of Red Lodge, and by the time the sun comes up tomorrow morning, I hope that we're going to have a hundred and forty-eight of them retrofitted. Um, hopefully, as you leave here tonight in the dark, you'll see, I've got a crew of two guys, this is their third night up there. Um, we've been five years worth of managing this project, it's not been easy, and for all the reasons you were saying. You know, I've learned more about lights than, I'm the only one that happens sometimes when the lights go out, because I've just, you know, I've, I've learned a lot about lights. Um, but the timing is just such that, you know, now we're working around the snowplains, and my crew's having a little trouble getting to the lights, because we've got Christmas decorations up and things, so be it. Um, so, so far, we've got a hundred and nine done in residential areas. Um, we have, um, fourteen done in alleys, and we have the twenty-four or seventy-two, however you do the math, on Broadway. Um, I've got a supervisor coming up tomorrow morning, it's going to, we've run into a, uh, little stumbling block with our speakers, our speakers are adding some, some additional to this, so we've got a supervisor coming up tomorrow, making sure we've got that all working. Um, I did mail out so far four hundred and twenty-two postcards to, um, either Red Lodge residents or property owners, um, telling them what we're doing, and asking them to be cognizant of our, of our trucks as we're moving around the neighborhood. So far, I've had six people call me. Um, the six, um, I would say, I've probably got one I'm still talking to, the rest we've been able to go to their house. Mike has gone with the bucket truck, moved the light, done some changes. Um, the one point I'd like to really make with these lights is they are all dark skies compliant. That means they're full cutoff. Um, now, this is not the Broadway lights, these are my overheads, the ones, um, the other ones, but they're dark skies compliant, and that's what is in your code, that's what people want. But what happens with dark sky compliant is that it becomes what's known as full cutoff, so no light goes up, all lumens are going to the ground. Um, so to somebody that's used to looking at the lights we had previously, the high-pressure sodium, they were used to looking at a light where the light went up and down, so now it looks brighter to them because all the light is going to the ground. So, a, a common confusion I found, when we say dark skies compliant, it's not, you can't see the stars when you're standing under the light.
Yeah.
So if, if you go to a dark area, then you can see more stars.
But if I'm looking across over the top of the lights, I'll be able to see those stars.
Yeah, yeah, if you get up to the airport, you're, in millions, it's real significant. Now, what we've done billions, if you go up to the airport and you look down, our residential areas are considerably darker, even though you can see the light on the ground. So that's just kind of an education piece. Um, any other questions for me, I think everybody here knows how to find me.
I just have a comment.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, driving uptown last night, those new LEDs and decorative lights are wonderful. They light up the, the street better, they light up the sidewalk better, and their crosswalks. It's a nice glow, I mean, you can see the people, if, they're really attractive, they don't hurt your eyes, look at them. They're, they're really nice, it's a nice light.
Well, thank you, I have put the fear of God in some of my coworkers about getting these done, my coworkers, so.
I think it was really nice.
Diane?
I think it really showed last night, because half of them were done and half of them weren't.
Yeah.
So when, you could really tell the difference, and I was telling people, you should go look at them, because you're going to be really impressed.
Good, yeah.
Because they're not going to notice it once they're all done, people aren't going to notice it, but there won't be any more surprises, I don't think, of people crossing in front of you, driving down the street that you didn't see instantly.
And we put quite a bit of money into them, having them custom-made, so we hope after five years of research, and, and many lights that we took back to the shop, Preston is our, we call him Lieutenant Luminaire, but, um, we've really tested these out, and so we really believe they're going to work, and we've actually put Robin in touch with the same vendor, so while it won't be exactly the same, um, same piece of equipment, we might be able to find something that will work as well for your lights.
And I will add, the ones in the alley are awesome too.
Oh, good.
The one behind my house has changed it tremendously.
Do they know it was your house?
No, they didn't. It used to be like Walmart's parking lot, my backyard, now it's not.
Really?
There's light there, but it's not as, as harsh.
Okay, so if you get someone that is not happy, we can address that, so, just get ahold of.
Are you limiting that to electrical-related things?
Yes, streetlights specifically.
I do have to say that we, we had, uh, one complaint, and the lady came in here, and we talked with her, uh, we've, uh, then they went ahead and filed the complaint with Northwestern Energy, and I think Mike was on it before I could even drive over there, so, maybe it was just adjusting it, and, and she seems to be fairly happy now.
There's an adjustment, I mean, it's, it's a different light, you know, than, people aren't used to, and so, I talked to Preston, and he said, yeah, they had some complaints in buildings too, but people tend to, you know, it's not how it was, so now this is different, and they adjust to it, but if people have complaints, call me, whatever, I'll try to, um, request them or whatever we can do, and.
I mean, remember when we put the lights up over on the skating rink, you know, there was some tweaking in a, in a week or three before we had people happy, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Thanks, kiddo.
Anything else on the LED streetlights?
Twenty-seven?
Yes. Uh, move on to pool update, James, you want to fill us in on how that's all going with the school district?
I don't have updates on that, I, I asked Neil briefly, um, today, and he said he had talked to you, so I thought you'd be able to work on that.
Yeah, I was relying on you to get us, but, uh, what I got from, uh, John was that it went to the school board, um, and they had pretty much tabled it, looking at the other studies that have been done, and, uh, then they'll move forward from there.
Okay, yeah, it's about what I know, yeah.
Did they have a timeframe on the table?
No.
So, if, if, if not, it's, is it, is it dead in the water, or it's just not on this week's agenda?
No, it's not dead in the water, they just, they wanted to review those studies that were done before.
And Mark Rossett is still pushing hard.
Yes. And on the other hand, I, I will send all the council people, there's a meeting in Laurel on their Aquatic Center, uh, coming up next week, if you would like to attend that. Uh, I'll send that out to you, and they're kind of reviewing what they're looking at in Laurel. It might be a good opportunity for some backflying, I'll forward that to you.
Thank you.
Move on to public comments. Any comments from the public? The high school guys are kind of late getting here, aren't they?
You should make them get up and talk.
I think, I think they should.
At least introduce themselves.
Come up and introduce yourself anyhow. This, and this is how we do it, you come up, you give your name and your address, and, and just introduce yourself, tell us what grade you're in, and what class you're here for.
Okay, so my name is Tristan Huglin, I live in Bear Creek, and I'm a senior, and this is for government.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Tristan.
Yeah, I'm Spencer Jones, and I live here in Red Lodge, you know, at the Chair Department, and, uh, just doing a project on, kind of, about how the process works, and he's actually my uncle.
Okay. Inside track.
I have a question.
Any other thing from the public comment period? Okay, what do you got, Mary?
Um, I saw the announcement for Coffee with the Coffee.
Yeah.
Is that city-sponsored?
No, it's, uh, we don't, we have no money in the game.
Okay.
The money is all by donations.
So it is our city police department that's putting that on.
Yeah, so that's city-sponsored. I just want you to remember that we did enter a new agreement with the Department of Justice that any city-sponsored events would be at a, uh, ADA accessible facility, but it is, who else is not?
Anything else?
Is there any kind of an update on the proposal you made to the Council for GLC?
We're still working on that. Um, we, we talked it over, we've been over there twice, we came up with an area that might be acceptable, James is working on it and we'll take it. We'll attend the, the next board meeting that they have or the, their, uh, Justice Building Board meeting. And we discussed where it goes.
I kind of related to that, I went to the, uh, Fire Oversight Committee and, uh, Tim Ryan said that the land that they entered into a lease for the training facility, that it wasn't going to be suitable for their needs, so I don't know if that's something that Tom Koontz has come to you with?
No, I have not heard that at all.
I think that's in the same area, so it might.
It, you know, it's right across the road, so.
So anyway, you might wanna get with Tom Koontz and see what he says.
In a sense, like what I did is I, 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 we went over and talked to the commissioners just to see if they wanted us to look at something inside the city, uh, parcel that we owned or somebody else owned that might be able to accommodate that. James, Jim, myself, uh, Chief Wells, got together and, uh, found a piece of property that might be suitable for that and, uh, we proposed that to them on Thursday, where it was, what, you know, they need to get some infrastructure up there, water and sewer and how that might all go. And it, it seems like they're looking at it, so we'll go to that meeting with, um, James' facts and findings and see where it goes.
Yeah, the discussions so far have been very positive.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Gloria was in on that too.
No, that's.
Didn't mean to leave you out.
You know, I mean, I always speak up if it's necessary.
That's right.
Even if it's not necessary.
Anything else, Dave?
I have an article that, uh, somebody shared with me, um, on, um, stormwater, um, in Missoula's, looking at some things, so I shared that with Jim via phone and I emailed it to Lonnie just now and asked her to send it out with, to council, just because that's one of those back burner items for looking at too, so just to share that information.
Anything else? Robbie?
I ran into Jody Running the other day.
Do you have her?
Yes. It hurt. Um, she mentioned about the resort tax, putting out questionnaires to the public and that it was gonna be on Facebook and you mentioned it's available on the computer.
The city's website.
City's website. Um, and Jody mentioned that there would be, um, sheets that they could pick up down here at.
Card copy.
At city, yeah, yeah.
I was not made aware of that.
Is what, what she said.
I'll catch up.
And I just, you know, it seems like it would be important and I don't, you know, like, things get mailed to everybody's post office box or, or whatever. It seems like it really, we should get it out to everybody.
You wanna check out on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll double check that and, you know, maybe we can provide a few paper copies here for people to fill out.
Who's got this? I don't know.
Be sure when you get your copy to answer it.
I told Robin it needs to be pictures, not words.
Pictures. Any other comments at the table? Let's call it a night.